Who do not know, General, this is a town hall and you're here to ask him questions. Frankly, I think he's a little nuts the way John McCain was. And that he's doing all of these unscripted town halls where people can come and ask him anything. And it's amazing the trouble that can get you into. But he still does it anyway. So I invite you to ask your questions. I invite you to share the answers. And I urge you to believe more than anything else. That this race is winnable for Don Bolduc. This race is winnable for Caroline Levin. This race is winnable for Bob Burns. This race is winnable even for Rich Gerard against Lou Dela Sandro. All we have to do is what we need to do and not be afraid to do it. Because the only thing you need to do when you're confronted by a bully is stand. And they shrink away. And that's why Maggie is missing in action. And without further ado, I give you General Don Bolduc.
Well, thank you very much. It's an honor to be here and thank you for all attending.
Good job, Judge.
And I see a lot of new faces here and that's exactly the purpose of this as Rich articulated. It's to stand and deliver in front of Granite staters. Because that's what I'm gonna have to do as your United States Senator. Your conduit to the United States Senate. Your ambassador to Washington DC. That's what's missing. The idea of public service. The idea that public servants work for you, not the other way around. The idea that special interests and lobbyists and very wealthy political elite should not run this country through career politicians who do their bidding. That has to change. I have done a significant amount of analysis on our problems over the last 40, 50 years. And I have come to the conclusion that career politicians are the number one problem we have. And that has been confirmed in my mind by listening and learning from Granite staters. I have been campaigning for over two years now. I have been to every town and city in this state. I haven't talked to 1.3 million people, but I have talked to a very good representation of them. From all political parties, from all age groups, from every profession that you can imagine. I have been out there on the ground doing the hard work that is necessary to earn people's votes. But you're only gonna earn their vote if you earn their trust. And that's the business I'm in. It's always been the business that I have been in. Accountability, responsibility, transparency. What you see is what you get. There's no pretension here. I don't believe I'm better than anybody else. I will make mistakes. I will own up to those mistakes. We're not perfect. But somehow, we have developed a society that doesn't appreciate when people come to the conclusion they've made a mistake and they need to change their mind. And they need to go in a different direction. Imagine, I'm a commander of a military operation. And we commence that military operation. And I'm at my higher headquarters and I have a plan. And that plan has certain milestones. And I do not listen to the input from my commanders on the ground. What they're telling me. And I say, nope, we got a plan. You're going to do this regardless of the consequences. That is not good. And that would not result in a good outcome. Because things change. Decisions are decisions that have both positive and negatives. And you have to enforce positives, but you also have to do something about the negatives. And if you're unwilling to change and you put yourself on a course and you reinforce failure, you're gonna find that you're gonna have historic inflation. You're gonna find that you're gonna have moms and dads and retirees and everybody else out there choosing between eating and heating. Retirees having to come out of retirement to get a second job because they can't afford to heat their home. They can't afford to put gas in their cars. Small businesses that can't operate on the business side because their electric bills are three and four times higher now. They can't operate on the labor side because nobody wants to go to work. Because they're incentivized by the federal government to stay home. That's not the right way to approach problems. I am all for, and for those that are here recording me for whatever, please know, I'm all for hand up. We all can use a hand up sometime. But I'm not for handouts forever and ever and ever at the extent of this. If we don't change our mind, we are going to have continued uncontrolled spending. Think about this. The average American today has additional credit card debt of a minimum of $8,600. Now, you might say, oh, oh, big deal. Well, that's $8,600 they don't have. But every, you know, they'll give you a credit card to go in more and more debt, right? The average household here in the state of New Hampshire pays over $700 more now than they did two years ago. Gas just went up again. Wholesale goods just went up. President Biden has said, we're not gonna have a recession. And then, well, we, we, we might have a recession. And he just recently said, well, a recession is likely, but it won't last very long. Just like the inflation was transitory, right? And they were wrong about that. Under these decisions, because they're not policies. Under these decisions, they have created unprecedented hardship for us economically. They have reversed energy decisions, energy policies that have created all of this economic hardship and we need to reverse them. It's not that difficult. But if you're unwilling to admit mistakes, you're unwilling to say the word inflation. Senator Hassan will not say the word inflation. Today, she said she communicates most effectively with Granite staters through newsletters. Yes, that's real. You were there. She and there was several people here. I communicate through getting out on the ground, doing town halls, talking to people on the phone, meeting them for coffee, meeting them for lunch, answering their calls. I would rather call someone up and talk to them on the phone or meet them someplace than send them an email or a text. That takes way too long and I can pick up the phone and go, hey, let's talk about this, right? That is what you're supposed to do. You're supposed to get out there and talk to people, not hide from them, not avoid them. Not think that you're better than them because you are a senator. That's not your seat. That's your seat. Every time I speak to people, it's a job interview to be your United States Senator. And worst of all, what's going on is we have unprecedented insecurity in this nation due to open borders and bad immigration policy that is being implemented today. And it's absolutely wrong. We must close the border. I believe that we should designate the cartels as terrorist organizations. The journey of an immigrant into this nation is fraught with danger. Assault, sexual assault, some, many are murdered. Women raped, children raped, both boys and girls. Then they're thrown into the sex trade, human trafficking, which is a $13 billion business for the cartels. Never mind what they're doing for the opioid crisis. Senator Hassan in August had the opportunity to vote for legislation that would have secured the border and she voted no. She had the opportunity to put more technology in the hands of our law enforcement officers on the border and in this country to detect opioids and she voted no. Maggie Hassan had the opportunity to reverse the 87,000 IRS agents and the $80 billion being programmed for them in order to provide our border patrol with more personnel and equipment to do their job and she voted no. She voted no in August against energy production, fossil fuel, natural gas. Voted no. Let me tell you something. The easiest thing you do as a senator is go into that chamber and vote yea or nay. It's the easiest thing you do. You walk in there, you vote yea, you vote nay. The hardest thing to do is to face the people that that yea or nay negatively affected. That's hard. I commanded thousands of men and women in combat. I commanded thousands of men and women in humanitarian operations and in training. And when we had casualties and when we lost people in training, when we lost people in humanitarian operations because they're doing dangerous things trying to save other people. When I lost 72 service members and did not bring them home over 10 tours in Afghanistan and in Africa, that's a sacrifice. And it's easy, easy as a commander, remove from the battlefield in a headquarters to tell people to go take that hill. But you know what's really tough? Looking their families in the eye, their moms, their dads, their sisters, their brothers, their children. Writing a letter saying how sorry we are for your loss. These decisions have consequences whether you're voting yea or nay or you're sending many men and women off the in harm's way. Or our police officers are doing jobs with both hands tied behind their back. Because they don't get the support of their community and the leadership in their community. These things have to change. They must change. And if we don't change them together, we, that's the pronoun we should be focused on, we. Or I, when we're saying the pledge allegiance, that's the pronouns that we should subscribe to because those pronouns put responsibility on us to work together. That's why my whole tenants, since I've been running for office in my entire life have been God, family, community, country. I believe in God and I'm not embarrassed to say it. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for God and my belief. I tell a story sometimes about, I was out on the ground, spending time with a team that I knew we were gonna go into a combat situation where we were most likely, most likely to have casualties. And there was nothing that we could do about it, but we still had to do the mission. And we tried to as much as possible mitigate that from happening. But I knew in my heart that it was going to, that it may be the last time I see some of those men. And so I went down and I spent the day with them. And I watched their mission planning and we did everything. And sometimes they said, hey, sir, we need this. And I would call my headquarters and I would say, get it to them. So we got together, my chaplain was with me because I always travel with my chaplain, said a prayer and as we adjourned before they were getting ready to go on their infiltration, get in the helicopters and go in, boom. One of my sergeants came up to me and said, hey, sir, you're, you're kind of a religious guy, aren't you? And I said, yeah, I am actually. He goes, you know, I used to be, but I got away from God. Maybe I'll go back to him, maybe I won't, I don't know. But he goes, I appreciate, I really appreciate you. And I said, well, thank you very much. And I said, we take care. Well, within minutes of the infill, gunfire, explosions, casualty, casualty number comes across. We launched the medevac helicopters. They go out, they pick up this sergeant, they bring him back. And it happened to be the sergeant that I had that conversation with before he went into the mission. And he says to me, I pull him off the helicopter and I said, how you doing, brother? And he said, hey, sir, I'm doing fine. And I said, hey, we're gonna get you on another helicopter. We're gonna bring you to Bagram Airfield. I'll be there in the morning to see you after you get out of surgery. And he goes, no, thank you, sir. And off he went. And about eight o'clock in the morning, I stroll in. He was out of surgery. He was up, he was feeling good. Pinned a Purple Heart on him. Listened to the story as he could remember it and tell it. He was very angry because the team that he was on had a team tattoo. And they put it right here on their leg. Nice big tattoo with the team emblem on it and, you know, operational detachment and all that other good stuff. And that's where he got hit with a bullet. And he said, sir, I gotta come back. They pissed me off, they ruined my tattoo. So I said, don't worry, you go back, you recover, you come back, you know, there's plenty of time. And he said, well, thank you, sir. And I'm on, you know, on my way out and he calls me back over and he said, hey, sir, the time I got hit, I started praying to God. Not only for me, but for the men that had to come and expose themselves to fire to pull me out. And for the helicopters that came in to get me. And for the doctors that operated on him. And he said, you know, I didn't have a mortal wound, but I gotta get back in touch with God. And I have more and more stories like that. Family is hugely important. And the deterioration of our family unit has caused huge problems in our community. And our communities being weak and divisive because people fight each other over sex, race, creed, religion. While this government completely controls us through fear and uncertainty. And it's wrong. This government has grown too large. There's no longer self-governance out there. There's no governance of the people, of the people, for the people. They do what they want to do and you have to live with it regardless of the consequences. Some of us are affected more than others. But at the end of the day, if this continues with unlimited government, 2.9 million unelected bureaucrats and growing, 450 departments and agencies and growing, 175,000 page register that the books would fill this entire room that regulate everything you do. And it gets in the way of you living your life and raising your family and ensuring they get the right education, ensuring we have a justice system that serves all of us and doesn't favor the elite at your expense. A political system that only 16% of Americans have faith in, and I gotta tell you, I'm surprised there's that many. This has to change. Our military has been decimated by wokeism, forcing of vaccinations to a very healthy group of men and women for no reason now. The Attorney General just, the Attorney, what's it called? No, what is that, the medical guy? The guy in charge, Surgeon General. The Surgeon General just got blocked on Facebook for putting out a warning that the vaccine does not prevent and will not prevent transmission of COVID. They blocked him. The Surgeon General of the United States of America, appointed by the President of the United States. They blocked him. Unbelievable. But yet we're kicking out over 20,000 service members to date for not completing the shot regiment or not getting a shot. My son was one of them here in the New Hampshire National Guard. Six years of service, couldn't read and listen unless he got the shot. Looked the flagpole and got out. My son Matthew, four-year ROTC scholarship to Purdue, wouldn't get the shot, couldn't get commission. Got handed a $37,000 bill on his way out. Terrible. I get contacted by so many military families who are broken now, who are upset, who are hurt. We are weakened, our nation. Our military is marginally capable of doing its job. Nobody was held accountable for the withdrawal from Afghanistan. That created Ukraine, that created an expansion in Asia by China. North Korea has launched more missiles and done more experiments, you know, to get nuclear weapons than the last three administrations. Unbelievable. Iran continuing to get the nuclear program on board and using proxies to attack Saudi Arabia and UAE and all this other stuff. And they're all driven by our policies. It's no wonder OPEC won't increase barrels. But you know what we're gonna do? We're gonna punish OPEC, right? We're gonna punish the OPEC country somehow, according to Biden and Hassan and the rest of them for not, for not increasing the oil by 2 million barrels when we created, when we created the oil problem for ourselves. Unbelievable. Doesn't make any sense. So I stand here in front of you as an option. An option, someone who God has given experiences to go down and be your ambassador, your conduit, a person to work for you, someone who doesn't have any other agenda than to do that. We all have a role to play. This is mine, but I need your help. And this isn't about Democrats, independents, Republicans, free staters, libertarians. This is about Granite staters in America. We all have these problems. We all need to come together for a better solution. 20 years Maggie Hassan has spent as a career politician, 20 years. And this is the best we can get? Someone who won't stand up and be accountable for the votes that she's done that's hurt us in every area of our life that matters? Family, religion, education, politics, economy, justice, military. I am afraid for our children and grandchildren. I'm desperately afraid. I look at my grandchildren who are nine, seven, four, and I have warned them not to take any colored candy from anybody but their mom and dad and their bubba and their mimi. Because they're smuggling in opioids that look like candy. And they found it in Maine. And if it's in Maine, it's probably here. And that puts a whole different light on Halloween in my mind. We owe it to our grandchildren and our children to provide them with a better life, with an opportunity that many of us in here had. I had it, private sergeant, lieutenant general. My God, you go from the bottom digging foxholes to telling people where to dig the foxhole, right? You know what I mean? So this is hugely important to me. I have developed my mission statement. And this is the last thing I'm gonna talk about and I'm gonna let you have at me. I have a mission statement that I believe if I follow, will allow me to do the right thing for you every single day. And it goes like this. We, the people, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice and ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare for ourselves and our posterity. That young lady right back there, that beautiful young girl who looks like her mother and we're thankful for that, anyone who knows Rich Gerard. There he is, he's in there right behind his daughter. Anyways, for our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution of the United States of America. That's what I'm supposed to go down and do for you. And I will do that. I did it for 33 and a half years. And I was dedicated to it. And I did it to the best of my ability. And I will never do anything, anything that would violate your rights or be inconsistent with the values and principles of this great nation. So all I ask, if you're gonna support me, thank you, ask others to do the same. But at the end of the day, we have to promote change and you deserve better than you're getting. And I would be honored to have the opportunity to do that for you and with you. God bless you, God bless America.
General, thank you for your service.
You wanna use the mic?
No.
You sure?
Yeah. Thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
And thank you for your vision.
You're welcome.
I was at the Auburn Tavern last week, I was speaking to you and I was very impressed. You've gotten my full support. One of the things you talked about and you did again today was the fentanyl problem. And I thought about it, thought about it, and as I was going home from something one day, the other day, I happened to think, who will we hold accountable? For the person who hands this stuff out during trick or treat? And you have a mass genocide in a neighborhood for you? Who will be accountable for that?
Well, I think it's pure and simple. The reason why the, the fentanyl problem here in New Hampshire has been increased by over 200% is because of the decisions of lawmakers, mostly at the federal level. And they need to be held accountable. They need to be held accountable for the yea or nay that they pushed that button on that exacerbated this huge, huge problem. Never mind Adderall, you know, fentanyl being stamped and being sold as Adderall. Think about it. If you haven't been paying attention, a lot of college students take Adderall so they can stay wired to study. I used coffee, it worked just fine. In my day, I don't know. But they use Adderall and they use it so they can stay wired and they can get through their exams, boom, boom, boom. Imagine they go and buy Adderall, either on the internet or from somebody. And that happens to be one of those stamped Adderall look-alike fentanyl pills. Imagine getting that phone call, moms and dads and grandparents and brothers and sisters. You know, you're never gonna stop all of it and things are gonna happen. But every law enforcement agency I talked to at the federal, state and local level, it's because of the policies of elected officials that have allowed this to exacerbate. I just talked to the Manchester Police. Manchester used to be a recipient of fentanyl. It is now a distribution point for fentanyl. Think about that. It's, it's a distribution point. It used to come from Lawrence and now comes right from here, out to our children who aren't really taught in school to look out for this stuff. There's no prevention programs or very few in our schools. But boy, you can't sling a dead cat without hitting a transgender class in school, right? That's no place, that's no place for that in school. That's parents' business. That's outside the school. That shouldn't be taught. My four-year-old granddaughter is sitting on the couch with me. We're watching Little Mermaid for the 577th time. And I asked her how school was going and she said, it's going fine. I go, well, tell me some of the names of your friends. And she goes through a list. And then I said, okay, well, what are you learning? She's four and she said, well, bubba. And she was kind of, you know, a little bubbly about it. And she said, do you know that a girl can be a boy and a boy can be a girl? And I had to say, honey, no, I did not know that. And so we went into a little tutorial. And at the end of the tutorial, she said, yeah, can you tell my teacher? And I said, no, I'm gonna tell your dad and he's gonna tell your teacher. And I said, no, I'm gonna tell your dad, and he's gonna tell your teacher, and that's exactly what happened, and it was verified that she was being taught that, no four-year-old makes that up. I got a seven-year-old granddaughter, you gotta verify everything she says, everything. But my four-year-old granddaughter, I mean, she doesn't repeat that stuff at four years old unless she's heard it, and unless it's been, there's been some considerable time spent on it, and so they removed her from the school. Parents have rights, parents need to have rights, and I will always default to parents' rights. That's me. Somebody have to leave that over here, yes, ma'am?
Speaking of children, do you have any thoughts about the crisis in quality childcare that we currently have in this country, that are preventing parents from going back to work, the lack of after-school programs that, you know, in the past have supplemented the extension of the school day, just as a personal hardship, and also an economic hardship for individuals and the country in general?
Yeah, you know, I would like to think that's more of a state and local governance issue than a federal issue. Now, the federal, we can help out, probably with funding and stuff like that, as long as no strings are attached, and as long as it goes specifically to helping out those programs. When I was a kid, I used to go to the YMCA after school, right? Now, my mother was home, my dad was at work, my mother was home, but I would go straight over with my friends to the YMCA, and there was a scheduled activities program that we did there with Mr. Plimpton. And I'll never forget Mr. Plimpton, because he was a wonderful guy. And Paul Plimpton, his son, we were a year apart, he was a year ahead of me, we were friends. And, so this was Laconia, New Hampshire, and that was an excellent after-school program. In between sports, in between stuff like that, we'd go to the YMCA, and we would do all kinds of things, and there was no drugs, there was no alcohol, there was adequate supervision, we played, we played different floor sports, basketball, everything like that, we did things together, it was a community event, and then when we were done, closed at five o'clock, boom, everybody went home, and those community activities are hard to find now, and they're hard for parents to send their kids to those things, because there's a lot of dangerous situations out there because of high crime, because of the way we have allowed prisoners, or prisoners, or people that break the law, getting easy bail, you know, walking to a place is difficult now. I am in full support of after-school programs, but I think that is a, that's community business, right? And we can help communities out, but I tell that story because I think all those things are great, and all those things are helpful, and it helps bring communities together. Look, I'm 60 years old, and I still remember Mr. Plimpton, right? He's no longer with us. He's probably running a YMCA up there, I don't know. I'll find out someday. But, these programs are huge, they're, we need to have them, but they gotta be, you know, they gotta be something that parents are gonna invest in, and they're gonna trust, whether they're at home or not. And after-school programs can be a supplement to that, where the kid doesn't even have to leave. We're flush with education money, why aren't we using it for those kind of programs? Right? You know, that's an option, so, and I think it's something that's well worth pursuing and considering. And it would be cost-free to the parent, because that can be a concern, right? You know, I'm paying 85 cents on the dollar for education in Stratton, New Hampshire, for an education that I don't get a good return on investment. An after-school program right at school, that would teach kids physical education, get them out there, and get them exercising and doing stuff, while the parents work, they swing by, pick them up, bring them home, they're in a safe place, they're getting well-supervised, getting exercise, they're learning something, they're not sitting around outside smoking vapes and all that other crap that they seem to want to do now. So, I don't know. It's up to our communities to come together and figure that one out. Yes, sir?
I've read that Tulsi Gabbard is supporting you, is that correct?
She'll be coming in on Sunday, she'll be spending three days with us, I'm very honored to have her support. She's a strong woman, she's smart, she's a veteran, well, she's actually still serving. She's a pilot, helicopter pilot, in the Army in Hawaii, National Guard, or the Reserves, one of those two anyways. But, I have been having a long dialogue with her, and you know what? We don't agree on everything. Imagine that. But we can still come together for the important things, the things that matter to Americans, the things that the Republican Party and the Democrat Party right now can't come together for. And I think that's a huge example, and I'm honored to have her support. I'm gonna learn something from her while she's here, and that's gonna be great, like I learned from Nikki Haley when she was here. As a matter of fact, Nikki Haley loved New Hampshire so much, and loved the day that we spent together, she's coming back for another visit, so that's gonna be great. If you haven't heard her talk, you need to hear her talk. I mean, she's got a future, at the national level, leadership level, and I don't mean in the United States Congress, I mean above that. There is clear to me, I've been around a lot of them, I've got a pretty good judge of potential, and I'm telling you what, she is very smart, and just a good person, and a good heart, and that's what we want. Yes, sir?
I am a lifelong New Hampshire resident, and a lifelong Republican, and my question to you is this, it seems that the attack ads focus on two issues. One is abortion, which I think Mr. Gerard very eloquently explained in his introductory address. The second is social security. I live in an over 55 million, some of the people are not quite as rent-wing as I am, what can I tell my neighbors regarding your position on social security, when they start espousing what they heard in those attack ads?
Right. So first of all, all the attack ads are lies. They have taken snippets from things that I've said, and they have twisted them and inserted them in a way that is absolutely untrue. And I said that today at our forum in Nashville, untrue, right? And, so, Rich did a great job of articulating my position on the abortion issue. I just did it before I came into a couple over here. She disagrees with the New Hampshire law, because she doesn't believe there should be an abortion law at all, and that it should be up to a woman regardless of, you know, day of birth or whatever, and that's her opinion, and I respect that. So there are a lot of views, right? But, you know mine now. So you can tell them that if they see that. Social Security, I want to pick Social Security, I want to protect Social Security, there's a hundred, there's a cap for income above $118,500 that needs to come away, and it would flood a lot, like millions of dollars, into the fund. We need to restore the money that the Congress, to include Hassan, continually takes from for other things. It is not an entitlement, it is your money. It's not their money. And, the raise that they just gave, after four decades of not giving you a raise for people that are getting Social Security, is not, has not gone far enough. You deserve a higher raise. It goes from $1,600 and change to $1,800, right? But, with this inflation, it makes no difference, right? I mean, it's even Steven, and probably worse, right? It's probably no game. But at the end of the day, I will protect it, and I will do things that protect that. I'm coming into the window for it. I paid into it my whole life. You know, I may be dumb, but I'm not stupid, right? I want my money back. I want the money I paid into this fund, just like you do, and every other American does. They've been stealing from it, and I say "they," Congress, she's been part of the problem. Her commercials are absolutely wrong on that issue, as they are on the Medicaid, the Medicare issue, right? Completely wrong. And if you go to the AARP website, you'll see my interview with them on all these subjects. You know, she just, she says, oh, I'm for lowering prescription drugs, but in August, she voted against lowering prescription drugs, in particular insulin, for people who have diabetes. Under Trump, it was 35 bucks, now it's over 300, and she voted no to bring it down.
She lied about that today.
And she lied about it today, but I got it, chapter and verse, she's a liar. And so, she's lying about those things as well, they got nothing else, right? So they, they record me, and then they take my words in little snippets, right? And they manufacture a commercial, and they pay actors to do it, and people believe it. So thank you for asking me that question, and please tell people in your community exactly how I feel. And we're putting it out too, so we'll get out there, and they'll see a counter to that. But you know what that looks like at the end of the day? Politics between two politicians. And people have had it up to here with me, including myself. Yes, sir?
I see those also, those ad, they show certain police officers saying that Maggie Hassan supports, you know, more cops on the streets, or whatever it is. Are they actors, or are they...
Yeah. I don't know who they are, but I just, I am a police officer in this state, and the state police has 87 openings right now. Manchester had 15 today, someone just resigned, they now have 16. They can't fill them. Every police department in this state is short of people. She's done nothing at the federal level to help that, at all. Nothing. So, while she was a state senator, while she was a governor, while, and while she is a US Senator, she voted for a bill as US Senator that eased up bail restrictions and prison time, and pedophiles were released from jail as a result of Republican. Pedophiles, endangering our community, right? She has voted the wrong way on almost every single issue that matters to us and our children, and their safety and their security, and she won't stand and deliver. She won't stand in front of her own Democratic Party and justify her actions, because they're unjustified. Ma'am, I saw you. Yep?
This is about veterans, the VA. I got a phone call today from my daughter, who goes to the Veterans Hospital down in Virginia, and she's had an awful lot of problems with them. She has had to go twice now, get a congressional inquiry, to get medication that she needs, to get exams that she needs, and today, the VA is offering to help her with a college education, which she wants to get a stipend. She hasn't gotten that, they've given her a lot of garbage and a lot of crap about that. I have a husband here, he did 32 years in the military. The other thing I want to bring, because I am a military wife, okay? The military wives need a lot to, as far as being taken care of, and in a lot of cases, they're not. So, you know, that's a big thing. And the VA, I've seen them so bad, and what they've done with our veterans, that we need it, so that our veterans that need it, get it done right.
Yes, ma'am. I agree with you 100%. I'm also a veteran. I also get my care from Manchester. Now, I look very healthy to you, I'm sure, right? I have two prosthetic hips from getting blown up, I have three replaced discs in my neck from, yeah, that was wrong, right? It's gonna be on the internet. Listen, it could be worse. That's powerful, I got that power.